About that, I don't know. I don't understand it.
That's all right. Joanne, before you stepped in, we we unanimously voted that you would do the minutes again.
What? Oh, wait, I didn't unanimously vote that.
It was a silent, I think it was a silent vote that I was the only person there. You can say no.
Actually, I I'll do it. I just have to go get a pen and some paper.
Okay. It's her own fault. She did such a great job. While she's not here, you just should know, like Derek did them one time and he did such a bad job that. He made it impossible for us to ask him again.
Sometimes you do that on purpose.
How well do we know Derek? And so we're calling, we'll call this meeting already is five thirty, it was five thirty two. And we have, it's a special meeting for a modification for the permit zero zero five dash one six. For the. Of then equity, I I apologize, I didn't pronounce that very well, Billy.
It's all right.
So you um you would just jump right in, Billy, do you want to go ahead?
Hey, we can see you.
Nice, alright, good. Yay, I figured it out. So. Where are we starting?
Um, Peter, are you, you're the only one who wasn't at the last meeting? Do you know what's happening?
I caught up a little bit. I think I get the idea of it, yeah.
Um, just quickly, so yeah, Billy's asking. For, I guess. To modify the, originally was modifying the landscape so that he could get his C O V and. Finish his financial. Dealings with the bank. And then what we talked about at the last meeting was. That it seemed more important to make sure that the parking lot, which was still not done yet. According to the primary finishing, it wasn't done, so we decided to deal with that first. And it's a bigger project. It was a much bigger project, so. That is how we left it.
So if I could just interject with regard to what has happened since then. Um, I pulled Anna in and she was gracious enough to help with the history of the application. Because it's been going on since, I think, two thousand fifteen, and there's been a lot of modifications. And she was able to pull out the two plans. That are the most recently approved, and that's what's been posted in your public meeting file now. Um, she also did a timeline of what had been approved. So kind of did a little bit of research and just took a look at the. A R B regulation within the zoning regulations, and I got the sense that you were a little bit uncomfortable. With regard to this decision, so so just so that you know, if you. After your discussions and review, if you're still not. Comfortable in going forward, it is something that you can refer back to the Planning and Zoning Commission as well, so. Um, I think you've got the most current information to work with, and you've got Donna here if you have some questions about it.
Oh, Matthew's here. Does any, everybody have any questions about the timeline that Donna put through or comments about that?
It was thank you for doing this.
Yeah. You're welcome. Yeah. Um, I think that when we last, when we last met, the the primary concern was, is. The parking area right now. Um, and I believe that was how we left it, that we were even going to hold off on the landscaping. And try to make sure that the parking area was done to complete the C of O.
Yes, but there was concern about the landscaping.
Yes.
That if we, you know, if we go ahead and give the okay without the landscaping, once that's done, we have no control anymore. Am I correct? I mean, at that point, whatever the landscaping is, is because we've signed off on it.
But. That's correct. I think that the question that Billy was putting forward was if you would waive the balance of the landscaping requirements. Um, and if that's something that you want to do because you don't feel like it's an important aspect, then. There is no recourse to have that done after the fact. Once a certificate of zoning compliance is issued.
Right, but it is, I mean, the problem is that it is important.
It is important. It's important to me, too. Absolutely. So. Do you want me to? Want me to explain a little bit again?
Sure.
I mean. So you, so everybody, so you know what my deal is with the bank and all that and getting the C O. I definitely want to put. Some trees out and the shrubs that we have, I mean, absolutely, so. I understand that if. You know, if you approve it for me to go forward and the bank can release more funds so I can finish and open. I will come back to you guys with either the same plan. Or. A modified plan that's even better. That has trees and plantings. Like even this spring, the first thing I'm going to do as soon as we can plant is put is put a. A tree out in the front. To the 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 entrance, the south entrance, little square spot where we have a tree. That's like the first thing I'm going to do. Because there's no sculpture going there, and then revisit with you guys after. I get a feel of where people are walking, when they park. Where the traffic is kind of going. And just come back to you guys with even a better plan or the the same plan. We're putting the three kinetic trees out in front of the gallery, so we get to see. With artwork, what it looks like with three trees, which is a big plus, like you never get to kind of do that. So we're going to put these three beautiful sixteen foot kinetic trees. And and be able to see how it looks. And, you know, even for you guys, I would come back for your advice and say, what do you think of? The look of this, and I mean, if everyone might say, you know, it ruined the whole aesthetic of the building. You don't have to do those three trees, or let's move them over a little more or rearrange it. So it's kind of like having. I guess it's just my word to you guys that if you do this, I'm not going to just leave our town and the A R B high and dry and say. You guys signed off, too bad, you know, that's that's not, that's not going to happen. That's really all I can say. I want to put. Trees out, I want to put some shrubs out, I want to have maybe even some walkways after I see how people are walking through the. To see the sculpture. You know, if I was building a Chevy dealership and it was not people walking through and seeing sculpture and sitting and, you know. I would totally understand that, but being. The property is going to have artwork and have people walking around on the property, not just parking and going inside. It gives me a really good opportunity. To see. Where people are spending a lot of their time, come back to you guys in. You know, over the summer or in the fall, right before we can start planting again and say, here's. Kind of what we're doing, but you know, show you a plan or the same plan or something, like I said, even better. That fits the town, fits that, you know, and pleases everybody. So in a nutshell, there's no way I'm going to leave the A R B. High and dry and not do anything, or even come back and say, yeah, not, you know, I'm only going to put a tree here or there. That's not going to happen. We're going to make it look really nice and even better. Than what we have right now. If that makes any sense. That's kind of where I'm at. And I'm being. Pushed by the bank to get my permanent C O before they release any funds and also before they release. Some money that we've had in an account. For the operating capital that they, and you know, that they're holding, that they are going to release, and if I don't do that. Then it's all got to come out of. My operating capital right now to pay the rest of the contractors, and that's going to be a hit for me, and it's just going to be a big. Frustration and I don't, you know, it's just that, you know, I'm depending on you guys to just trust me. And I know that's a lot, but.
Well, I mean, I, it it is, in is, I mean, it is, if you look at, we got a list of notes of the. How this has played out, and there have been times where things were done without our permission. So there's a history of.
What was done? What, let me know.
I mean, it wasn't built the way it was originally intended to be built to had some. You had places on the roof. Roof pitches changed, you had siding colors. There were just a number of things that felt like they got done without coming to us first. So there is a bit of a, there is a bit of a hesitancy.
Roof pitch, I understand, roof pitch and colors, the siding, those two things.
You changed, I mean, there were, you were going to eliminate metal siding, you were going to change the concrete trim to bronze metal. And then I think you were going to change it back to. The concrete around the front door, but I think it's still the bronze.
It's still the metal. It was always the metal, but it was going to be, I was going to change it to concrete, which I'm glad I didn't, and it's still the metal. And the roof pitch was, the roof pitch was always the same visually, it was the inside. So there'd be no angles on the roof pitch on the inside. So the roof pitch was always flat from looking at it. But we changed the roof pitch. On the inside and added insulation, so when you were inside looking at the south and north end, it was a straight. Ceiling and not a little pitch. So. Those things and the color of the siding was always going to be the gray. Unless, I mean, that's. What I thought. But I do apologize to the whole board if I did the, any changes like that that were severe that. I didn't come back to you guys, I I should have, I would have. But I don't think that's too severe. Anyway, I mean, it's not even. An issue, is it? I mean, the color of the siding, you said, and the pitch of the roof.
No, it's fine, it's fine, it's just, I was, the thing is, I wasn't involved in this from the very beginning either.
Okay.
So. It just. I I can't, maybe I'm just not doing a very good job of explaining it. But if it's, I mean, one, so last time you were talking about doing the tree, the kinetic trees in place of trees. And my feeling on that was, if someone comes in and buys the kinetic trees, then there are no kinetic trees and no trees. So it seems to me that we really do need. The green landscaping, especially around the front of the structure to soften it. And if if you're going to be putting sculpture out, which is great. And you get sold, which is great for you. Then if that was part of what we thought, oh, that's going to be great, we'll just have the kinetic trees and then they're gone, and then there's no trees. So that was one of, and that was one of my hesitancies from last time.
Okay, I got you. And I see that as a big, I see that as more of a plus to see what. Real trees would look like in front of the gallery with kinetic trees. What if we put the three kinetic trees in front of the gallery and it kind of ruins the aesthetic of the field? And it's like, wow, I'm glad we didn't plant three real trees because it was, now we got to. Now it looks, it ruined it, so we, it's like a big, nice test. In my eyes, it's like we have these kinetic trees that, and if they do sell, it's like, well, they looked great, let's. Let's put the real trees there. After they sell or move them and put the real trees there. They don't, the the kinetic trees don't have to live right there until they sell. We can lift them and move them somewhere else. So I think it's a nice way to. See what it looks like.
I think the idea of the kinetic trees is great. I'm not objecting to that at all. I just don't think they should be in place of. That there's, it looks like there's plenty of space for both.
Right. Okay, we can put the kinetic trees somewhere else.
I wasn't, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so just so I can kind of wrap my head around it. Billy, so the the issue is that. Uh, because of scheduling and funding, you don't anticipate getting the planting as originally proposed in the ground prior to. Uh, getting your 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 final C O. That's, is that the situation?
Yeah.
Okay.
And when we came to you originally with the plan with Richard Rosiello, we did this. In phases. For this exact reason.
Yeah.
So, and we didn't realize at that meeting that in order to get our permanent C O, we'd have to do. All two or three phases, however many there were, but. I think phase one was what we've already planted plus. Two trees out front of the entrance. So we planted two trees. And the phase one would have been the other two, but we can't plant them right now, obviously. And that's the first thing I'll do this spring is plant those two trees out front, and that would be phase one. And then we were going to kind of see, like I'm saying right now, how things were going, come, and if things were, you know, people were. You know, especially with the kinetic trees, putting them there, it gives me an opportunity to see what it looks like with three trees there. We can move the kinetic trees in a day, I mean, just to see what they look like, we can even stand them there. So, yeah, basically, that's, that's correct. So we thought we'd be able to at least get phase one done, get the permanent C O. And then do phase two, come back to you guys.
But the, but you 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 want to get your C O before before the planting season.
Yeah.
In essence.
And the reason of that is because. Of the bank. They, we went so far over the construction time that they've been very lenient, and they want me to have my permanent C O before they release any more funds. So everything's getting held up, and I know, again, I'll repeat this, this is not, that's not your problem, that's my problem. So. I'm looking at it like. For me to get the funds released, to keep, continue to to have Tim and the workers come back. Over. Four trees and some tall grasses, it's, it just seems like. We're going to do it. We're going to come back with even a better plan. So basically, that's, so you know.
Is this phase one then? Are you saying the, this, these, this is phase one? These would be.
I think we had phase one as what the two trees we already planted down the side, down the driveway. And there were going to be two trees at the entrance.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but the the plan that's being shown right now is not the current plan. I don't know who's screen sharing. But there was a a plan in the file that Donna had pulled out. That was the most current plan, like I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting.
Victor.
There had been many modifications. This was one of them that was not necessarily approved. So, yeah, the ones that are indicated as approved plans, those are the two that Donna pointed out as the ones that. Uh, commission actually, the board and the commission actually reviewed and approved.
And in the folder, there's a, there's a. There's a modification request, the plan that's called a modification request.
Right, and that's the, what he's asking for as a final.
Okay, so that's, that's, in essence, that's what we're evaluating right now.
Correct, Billy, that's the one you submitted at the last meeting that you want to.
Me?
Yeah.
February fifth.
Can't see this one. So, yeah, so that's, so we, yeah, that's it. So we've planted those two trees over there. In the back, and then out front. There's two more trees that will go in those square spots. One to the south and one to the. North. So there and there. That would have been phase one. So now. With the one to the north. With the telephone pole there, I I wanted to come back to you guys and see, instead of putting a tree there, if we could do a nice little garden with a rock and some. Like an evergreen and make it really nice. Instead of putting a tree there with the telephone pole, and it's just like a big mess right there to add a tree. So that would have been one thing that I would have come back to you. And asked, and if you said, nope, you got to put a tree there, I'd say, okay, and I'd put a tree there.
Where are you, where are you talking about? I don't.
Do you see the two? No, no, not those, over where you just, yeah, so that. This, that's the north one. So there's going to be two trees. One there and one to the, on the other side of the driveway entrance. So the north one. Right. I was going to come to you guys and say, what if we did a nice little. Garden area, Richard's idea, with like a, maybe a boulder and some evergreens and plantings and made that. Whole space look a lot better than just sticking a tree there, because if you're looking at it in person, there's a telephone pole. I'm just using this as an example. There's a telephone pole there and there's like all this stuff happening, and to just put a tree there seemed to be. You know. Not the right idea in my eyes, aesthetically.
That's right at the point where your parking lot, where your entrance area. Is right adjacent to the, is that the pizza place now?
Yep, exactly. Yep. The pizza place is out. Actually more towards the road. Like it brings, you know, it comes out a little more. Yeah, exactly, it comes out. So. It's just like a mess right there to just plant a tree, and so I'm actually going to do something nicer. Instead of just putting a tree there. Make a nice little garden area.
What's the timeline, what's the timeline thought process on this one? This face?
That, I would do this first thing when we can plant this spring, would be that. Tree to the south. And a little garden area to the north. That would be this spring. As soon as we could plant. Like, that's a definite. And then. To go back to what I was saying before, kind of get a feel for what's going on, and then come back to you guys with either the same plan or. Like I said, a better plan. Something that would still. Have some trees and, you know, the the tall grasses that we had in the other in phase two or three, that exactly correct. My plan was to come back to to look at that with a few of them there. Get some in pots and put them against the gallery and see how they looked. That would have been phase two. And if it was like, that looks terrible. It it ruins the whole look of the building. It's not good. I would have asked you guys, look, I put four or five of them here in pots. What do you guys think? And you might have looked at it too and said, yeah, it doesn't look great. It kind of ruins the nice look of the stone there, and maybe we'll bring them out to the. To the sidewalk and row tall grasses going down the new sidewalk. So it's kind of like. I don't want to ruin the look of the gallery by just. You know, I want to test it out and check it and check and come back to you guys with it. Not just have it up to me, but ask your opinions too. You're the A R B, ask you, and if you, you know, it's. I'm open to working with you guys on the whole thing, so it's like, um, it's like a win-win. If you. Were to trust me. But that's really all I can say, you know, I know. That's really all I can say.
Tell us, Billy, tell us, if this doesn't get approved, then what is, what does that look like? Does the building not open for what's delays, what what's going to happen?
If the, if the, if it doesn't get approved, then I have to. Take my capital money that I have, pay the workers and then wait to get my permanent C O. For. For the bank. And at that time, I don't even know what they would do if they reimbursed me or not. So it's, yeah, it's a big, I wouldn't be asking for this if it wasn't.
So if if this does get approved, then when does that plan for the building to be accessible to the public?
I would open late May, early June. That's my.
And if it doesn't, what is that, how does that affect the opening day and the use of the building?
It if, say that again?
I, no, I was just saying, if if it doesn't get approved, does this delay the opening in May, June?
If this does get approved.
If it does, if it doesn't.
If it doesn't get approved, it it could. It could, I have pieces that are, that I have to pay for that are coming from overseas, from London and from Spain. Sculpt that I'm paying half the shipping for, which is, you know, forty thousand dollars and. Uh, you know, so that's the kind, the capital that I have right now, I've kind of been, you know, the invitations, the ads that I'm going to be doing, so yeah, it could affect. It could, it it could affect it.
When will your parking area be completed? Because I can see that you put the 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 stone stops in.
Yeah.
But I, but it still hasn't been gravelled or.
That's first thing in the, as soon as the ground unfreezes, first thing in the spring before we open, that's, we're going to. Finish that up.
And you'll do the the metal trim around the parking areas that you had talked about?
Yep. Absolutely. I got to keep the gravel in there, and that's the nice cleanest way, and I think that's, that's perfect. So that's another expense that I'm going to be paying for out of pocket that now. Comes out of my pocket to pay the workers and all that, so it's, yeah, it could affect me big time. That's why I'm asking for this, because it really, it could affect. A lot of stuff. But again, that's my problem, not yours, so.
So to just interact a little bit about the parking lot. That metal trim has never been approved or required by this board. It's only been discussed in meetings. So there's no concrete. And then with regard to the parking lot in general, the final, like I, like I've been saying. Donna went through the records and pulled out what had finally been approved, and I know that there have been discussions along the way about doing it differently. Changing to concrete and all sorts of different things. But what's in the folder now showing the parking lot like half paved? It didn't have, it was blacktop, not concrete as it is now. So all of these things are changes that have been discussed amongst yourselves, but have never been, you know. Actually approved and in the file. So. I think there's many different understandings over the course of what's happened in this project. That, um, there were many discussions, but none of this is, none of this was really approved. So at the end of this meeting. I think that you really do have to understand what was approved and what you're considering waiving. Okay, and the two things that were approved are on the, on the public meeting drive.
Tyler, I just have a question in terms of what was approved by planning and zoning with the parking. The the, and Matthew might be able to answer this one. The, the rules with planning and zoning is that you are proving the amount of spaces that are needed. Is that correct? You're not really involved in the aesthetics of the parking lot itself in terms of the metal edging. And the stops, or were the the curb stops required by planning and zoning?
Yeah, so none of, none of that was required, like you're saying, the parking spaces, the health and safety of the community as far as like. Turnarounds for, you know, fire engine and all of that plan would be under the planning and zoning jurisdiction. However, you are also, as a board, you report to the planning, you, your, your architectural considerations. Go to the Planning and Zoning Commission as well. Um, so. Both you and them can work jointly as far as approving the aesthetics, so. Like I said at the beginning of the meeting, if this is something that you want to defer to them, you you can. Um, but it's not. Their regulations deal with more of the spaces and the health. Their regulations deal with more of the spaces and the health, safety aspect. Matt, you're welcome to chime in if you want to speak a little bit about that.
Yeah, I, 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 I will simply say that um, the plans that are approved in planning and zoning. Um, are generally approved in in the cases in the Village Center Commercial. And in Village Center Residential are approved um, after review of the Architecture Review Board. So Architecture Review Board um, signs off on the plans and then planning and zoning looks at this, the planning and zoning looks at the planet and and approves the entire application. So when, when it leaves planning and zoning, that's, those are the approved set, set of documents. If there are changes, um, which there have been numerous on this project, then this board. Um, has to understand that when they approve changes and they accept a drawing. They're accepting the changes to that drawing, whether or not you're discussing the changes to that drawing. So. Um, as Ty said, it used to be that this was, there were some asphalt. Aspects of the, of the parking and the Architecture Review Board in review and approval of subsequent plans. Has approved. Going from asphalt to gravel. So my only, my only point is that the, this, this board has to be careful in what they're approving. In terms of what they're looking at, because it changes the, it changes the approval.
Can I just make one correction?
Yes.
Um, the Architecture Review Board. When they approved the site plan, the site plan specifically said. Uh, paved area, gravel area. So that was the site plan that the Architecture Review Board approved, and that was the site plan that the Planning and Zoning Commission approved. The change to concrete. Never came before the Architecture Review Board or the Planning and Zoning Commission. So. What they need to do, I think at this meeting. Is to approve the change from the bituminous paved. To concrete. To coincide with the change that was made to the handicap parking space without any changes by the ARB. And then decide what they need to do on the landscaping plan. If they want to accept only phase one. With a slight modification at this point in time. And then when Billy gets ready to do phase two, he can come in and ask for another slight modification to that phase two. So that's the way that I, doing my research. That's what I believe that that's what happened.
That, oh, sorry, Ty, but except that if the, if this board approves. Um, the modification that that the applicant that Billy is asking for now. They, you know, they, they really, Billy doesn't have to come back and say anything to the ARB because. Um, the ARB has said that they are, that, that they've issued the certificate of zoning compliance. And therefore Billy doesn't owe them anything. So Billy doesn't have to come back in and say, I want to change the landscaping plan to this or that because. The ARB has already said the project is complete and Billy can do whatever he wants.
Right, right, right. But, but they. But. Anytime you're gonna mod, you, you can, you can come back and modify the site plan. After zoning compliance has been issued. You don't need to wait to do that. You don't, you don't need to not have your zoning compliance.
But once, once the zoning compliance is issued, there's no recourse to force him to do the balance of the planting plan. Other than his desire to do it and his good word, that he says he will do it. There's no recourse. And just to back up a little bit about the phases of the planting plan. If you remember, there were three phases and at one point that it got modified to verbally, I think. So. You, you just said that if. You're, you're going on the assumption that the first phase is complete. I'm not sure that's the case.
I don't think phase one is complete at all.
Okay.
The two trees out front would make, I think, phase one complete. Like I said.
And just one other comment that I'll make is, is um, I'm behaving, I'm, I'm speaking as a, as a member of the public who's got some knowledge with this. But I don't mean to steer or um, it's not my place to offer any opinion as to, as to whether. Wh- what this board should do um, with regard to this, this latest request. So I just want to make that. I don't want to say yea or nay or no, rely on what I'm saying to make your decision.
Well, I, I have a question about the, the driveway then. Are we? Are we still considering the driveway? Are we considering it done? Does that go back to P and Z? To say that. It's not in compliance with. With what they approved. I'm confused about the driveway part of it.
So the way that I look at the driveway portion. Is that. It's not complete. Because according to the site plan that was approved, it was a paved driveway up to. Where that little bump out is. Maybe one or two spaces. Down, you know, maybe one or two spaces. Um, east. But that was all going to be paved and then the rest of it was all going to be gravel. But what happened was when they put in the handicap spots. It was decided to use concrete instead. But that approval was never, that was never approved by the Architecture Review Board. So. That's why I'm saying that I believe that a modification should be made to the driveway in addition to whatever plantings you want to modify. And then once. Once they put the concrete in. And, you know, and then the rest of the gravel. And then that'll be completed in compliance with the site plan and in compliance with the modification. At the ARB makes if they decide to approve that.
And Joanne, I think to answer your, your basic question, because this is not changing. Parking spaces or locations or number of handicap spaces or circulation. Um, the, the, the configuration of the parking isn't changing. It's, it's, this becomes an aesthetic conversation. So it stays with.
It's, okay. Yeah.
If I could just jump in about the concrete, just so you guys know, when. We were looking at the space and, and after John Casey did all the asphalt in the new space, I just didn't want to have the blacktop and. Tim told me. That you have to do the skirt hardscape and the handicap and hardscape. And I just was like, let's do it in concrete instead of blacktop. Because it would look terrible. So I didn't realize that that. You know, nobody told me that that needed to come back to the ARB. So if I totally apologize for that, but I think the concrete. Looks a lot better than blacktop. In the long run, but if I knew that I would have. Have definitely have come back to the board. So my apologies on that one. I just thought it had to be a hardscape and I wasn't looking back at the. Original plan that the architect did with the, with the. With the asphalt, so. So that's, that's what I explain that.
Does, so just for my information, does a handicap parking have to have? A hard surface for both the parking and the area next to it to come in and out of. So at some play point. There has to be, if you want to have gravel, there has to be a change between that hard surface and gravel.
Right.
And I, I'll, I'll answer that Derek too, that uh, that, that handicap has to be hardscape. It has to be, it has to be, and. Um. So it, it can't go from, it, it can't go from, from some hard service to, to gravel, even if the board wanted to approve that.
No, I, I understand. I'm just saying at some point it has to, wherever the, the concrete will be at that, at the handicap or the asphalt. And after that, at some point, if you want gravel, it has to transition to gravel or stay whatever that material is. I'm, I'm assuming. I'm understanding that the handicap has to be a hard surface. It just, you have to figure out if you're going to change where aesthetically you make that change. After the handicap.
Well, it looks like now that it would just be gravel. I mean, obviously, from what I can see, the gravel needs to be graded and. And we need a lot more gravel. Um, to, to level it out with the handicap parking. And that was part of the reason I was asking about P and Z. I mean, because the way it, it is now, if you were going to open this. It, it's actually like a safety hazard with the.
No, it's not actually. The, that's not showing, the handicap is actually huge. The parts, have you seen it in person or just?
But it's just the, the transition from the hardscape to the gravel right now. There's huge pits. So.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's going to be a thin layer of gray gravel, but for the handicap.
Yeah, no, the handicap is fine. That one's fine. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, my, mine was just what Derek was, was bringing up about the transition from that hardscape to the gravel part.
Okay, right. And that will be gravel before we open. For sure.
So just once again, the gravel was never what was. Right. So the fact that you're talking about it now is fine, but what was approved was blacktop halfway up. The parking lot, including the handicap space and the apron. So they transitioned. Apr- apron and handicap space to concrete. But that gravel portion that everybody keeps talking about is not, was never part of an approved plan. So if you're making that change, you're making that tonight.
I, I understand.
Okay.
But it's like ultimately, I think the, the tricky thing is that we're here to approve a plan, right? Or we're to not approve a plan.
Right.
Simple as that. And.
Yep.
Um, and I'm, I think that what perhaps we're struggling with is, you know, what, which plan we're, we're looking at because. Ultimately, we're going to either approve a plan or not. And if we approve the plan. That's sort of, that's the end of the day. And I think it would have to be a plan that we could all. Uh, you know. Feel. Uh, good about and, and be in supportive because, I mean. Uh. You know. Whether, like, I think we, you know. Of course, take you on your word on ultimately coming back and. Um, you know. Adding to the landscape, improving it over time. But. Um. Taking the personal relationship. Aspect out of it and just making this. A little bit more procedural. You know, that's ultimately, we need to, we, we need to look at a plan that. Is the plan that we're either approving or, or not approving. So. I think baseline question is just making sure we all understand the plan. That, that, that we're looking at in, in regard to. Hardscape materials. And planting. Um, in, unless, unless the plan is that there is no landscape plan at all right now. And, and we're all cool with that. Am I right? Like that's, that's the basic question. And so is, is this the plan, the plan that we're evaluating, the one that we see in front of us right now? Cause we're not going to identify problems right now and try to solve them with a Zoom meeting, right? And modify a, a plan in real time. Like, we need to have a, a, there has to be a, a record, right?
That would be ideal.
You're right.
Okay. That, that's what I was curious about actually. Are we now modifying it or do, does it have to come back with a plan? You know, with like the gravel modified.
That would be ideal if you had an overall plan, if Billy presented an overall revised plan. Of exactly what he's proposing for you to agree to modify. However, if. I, I mean, I think if you're not. If you're not willing to entertain. That, not doing the rest of the landscaping, then it seems like. There's no reason to ask him to do all of that.
Because ultimately this plan that we're talking about, it, because of the project schedule, the timeline and. The planting. Season, this, this landscape plan would have, wouldn't have landscape on it, right? It would be a hardscape plan. And there would, because planting or no planting represented on the plan. The C O would be issued prior to planting. So. Um. And I'm just, again, and again, I'm on, I'm just coming at this from a, from a purely just like how we, you know, how we can view this thing to move it forward or not move.
Exactly. So, so I mean, the option has been given to Billy to get a temporary certificate of zoning compliance, which is often done. When there's planting issues and seasonally it's not appropriate to plant. Um, and a bond is given and you get a temporary. However, Billy's bank will not accept that. So that's not a possibility in this scenario. It's either he gets issued a certificate of zoning compliance without any plantings. Um, if you guys agree to it and whatever modifications to the parking lot you agree to. Or he's held accountable to what was approved and he just doesn't get a certificate of zoning compliance until that happens.
The sticky wicket for us is that the bank is really. Not cooperating. Which is, you know, as Billy said, it's not really our issue here, but that, you know, the problem for Billy is the, the bank is, is not. Playing. Ball.
Right.
Um, but you know that.
So, so you know, I'll make it easy for you guys because it seems, I under, I totally understand. All your, your point of view for the whole thing. Um. So basically. If this plan right here. Can't get approved. And with my word telling you that I am going to. Come back to you with a better plan or the same plan, maybe just tweaked a little bit. And obviously I'm going to clean up the driveway first thing this spring. And get the gravel down and leveled out. Obviously, and whatever else to make it look really nice and not any safety hazards. I would never open the. Open my gallery with any safety hazards. Uh, in my parking lot. It would be. It's um. It's either that. Or. I just have to see what happens. So really that's it. You know, I, I mean, Matt, do you remember when? In zoning, when, when. You said to me. I don't know if it was you that said to me, but what if Billy just doesn't build the gallery and builds just the warehouse? And I promised everybody I would not do that because that was an, that was a thought because you guys gave me the go to build. And I said, and someone said, well, what if you just realize you don't need a gallery make? And I said, I promise this board, I will build the gallery. And I built. A million and a half dollar. Gallery with my word that I would. If you recall that, I don't know if you do or not, but I remember that and I built it. We're talking some landscaping. You guys have my word. That I.
I don't like, I don't have any, I personally don't have any doubt that the landscaping will be completed. I completely, I, I am. I'm sure of that. I.
Right.
I'm just, I like, for, for me personally, it's almost like I feel like I. It's almost like outside of my, um. I, I. Uh, I almost feel like I have to like. This one's tough for me. I maybe, uh, and I haven't been on the, you know, board as long as some other people, but it just. I. Um, it's, it's just the being torn between, you know, the plan that we're approving versus ultimately what we know will come. It's. Just, it's the. Uh, you know, the.
So what if this was just my plan that I came to you guys with and said, I want to just have a lot of grass and make it look like this? And didn't have. Why put trees out or why do that? I mean, I wouldn't, that's, that's, it, it would look boring. But I get it. I, I, I don't know.
I, I, I think what I'm, what I would like to say is I, I hear you about promising for the, for the landscaping. And I would take your word at it, that you would do it. But we need to understand what this parking area is going to be, because that's still. A lot of us are new to the board, are, joined the board after a lot of the. Original plans were made.
Yeah.
So I don't understand where I'm looking at this plan. I don't see. Anything on the plan having to do with where it's gravelled, where it's concrete, things like that. And I think that what. What Ty is saying is that we need, we need to know clearly what's happening with that before we could do, we could approve it. And maybe it's me understanding what I'm looking at, but I can't, I can't see from this plan where the material start and stop.
Um. Does anybody have the as-built that they can put up on the screen? Ty, do you have that or no? Cause that shows it.
An as-built?
The as-built that Gary did? We don't have that?
Not, no, not in the file. So we have the two plans in the file of what was approved. And then your proposed plan.
So if you look at this and. And zoom in a little bit to the. So if you look at this and and zoom in a little bit to the handicap and the skirt. It's basically that square in the very, in the skirt, where you see that square, that's. If you go out towards, no, not that. That's not even, that's the square at the skirt coming in from seven. There's like a square. So that's, no, that's the grass. The concrete part, the driveway part, sorry.
It's hard to see on these little plans. It's really hard to read. When I blow it up, it's still, it's too, um.
Okay, well, basically, there's a big square right there that's concrete. And then there's a big square at the handicap. So it's not just concrete, one parking spot for the handicap. It's actually almost the same size square as that skirt. Exactly. So that you just did it. That is right now, perfect. That is concrete. The rest of it is gonna be gravel.
Just those two outlined areas.
So if you. Right, so if you go in, if you go back to the handicap spot.
Mm-hmm.
Now, there's like a little rectangle after it towards the, right, that that's also concrete. And then you got the whole. Uh, side, the 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 walkway going in is concrete, the gray long line. So that's a. So that whole thing, exactly, that's all concrete.
Yeah.
And then the rest, that's concrete and the skirt is concrete. And this is an older plan, but there's also a concrete walkway that goes all the way south of, in front of the gallery and wraps around to the back. End of the gallery, but that's not important right now. But yeah, that's where it goes. Exactly. To the back door. Boom. Keep going.
Billy, it's a lit- it's a little bit important because, um, this is, this is the approved plan, right? So there's, there's a walkway now, you you haven't done the patio in the back. Um, but then and the walkway in the front, I know what what's there, but it's, it's not exactly what's depicted on this plan in in either case. So that's that, that, that's part of the, 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 the moving pieces, the moving components of this, of this approval is, is I think what, what is.
Matt, who would, who would have been, like, when we did, like, we came, someone said zoning ways. We had to put that concrete path in front of the gallery around to the back door. And that's why we did that, because.
Yeah, no, that was a fire marshal. I believe that was a fire marshal requirement and not a zoning requirement.
And that's because you changed the window to a door in the front.
No, no, the window's not a door in the front. That's.
You you ended up having to put a door in the back.
Matt's just making fun of me, cause he like the other window.
Stan, didn't, didn't Stan make you put a door in the back?
In the back. We had to.
So that's where that sidewalk goes.
Right.
And that was a fire marshal requirement.
Right. So when that happened, when we were told we had to do that, should I have come back? To the ARB or the zoning and said, we have to do this? Like, who, who would have been in charge of that to tell me to do that? The architect, the engineer, Tim, the builder, or me, the owner, who, like, it just happened. Like, it was like, okay, we gotta do this. Well, let's do it. And we did it. So.
You wouldn't come back with the revised plan to the architecture review board under the direction of the fire marshal.
Okay. I wish someone told me that the builder or someone or whoever, I don't know. Um, my apologies for not coming back on that one, but I didn't know. But I've never built before, so I I didn't know that. So the driveway. How it looks right now, the rest of it is gonna be a really nice gravel. And that's gonna get done the first thing in the spring. And. If you guys can't, if, but if you can't do it, approve that right now, it's just let, just let's, we're, you know, I get it. I, if you're more concerned about the driveway, that's the last meeting we had. I was told I had to put the wheel stops in, so I ordered all those wheel stops, paid for all of them out of pocket, paid Tim to put them down. I thought that was it. Obviously, we gotta straighten them out when the weather's better and we can do the grading, but. You know, the last meeting we had, we tabled it because we had to put the wheel stops down. That's what I recall. If I'm wrong, then. Sorry, but that's what I remembered. So I did that. And now we're here at the special meeting. To talk about the plan, really not the driveway. That's. About the plantings, I should say, not the driveway. I mean, so if you can't go on my word, and I understand if you can't, to approve that plan, so let me come back, then we should. We should just say no and let me figure out what I gotta do. With no hard feelings at all, and uh, that's really it, right? We're kinda just going back and forth a little bit. We're not. I think that's it.
I think, I think it is, I think it is. And I also believe that we, it would, it would make all things easier going forward. If you had an updated plan that showed the walkway per the fire marshal's direction. And what your updated landscape thinking is with the evergreen and that moment you're speaking of. So that we have something accurate to look at. I think, cause, cause that's what's gonna be registered and that's what's gonna remain in the file. And that's what we're gonna have to lean on in any future discussions that may happen. And right now, we're, we don't have a a real, a real site plan that, that's of the actual work that has happened in between the conversations you had. Previous to this meeting.
Hmm. So with that being said. That's based, then, even if I come back to you with an updated plan with the evergreen there instead of the tree, or even if I had the tree. I can't do that anyway, so I can't get my permanent CO anyway. Right? So. I I guess the whole meeting for this is just, uh, is, is no, right? Because if I come back with another plan, I have to finish that plan. Before I can get my. Permanent CO anyway.
Right.
So I will come back with to you guys. So I think we just. Just say no, because that's where it seems like it's going. And I'll come back with another plan and I'll just have to, uh, do it. Do whatever.
I think it would be better to say no, but to give, as, as was just said, to give you an opportunity to make it clear. What the approved parking, hardscape and gravel are, where, where all the changes are. So when we're looking at it, we're not looking and and trying to figure out what is actually happening. And then I think the idea about the landscaping, I think I I would be okay if, if it was understood. I I understand you can't really do a lot of this planting until the fall. And it would be not, it wouldn't be great to make you wait until the fall. So I could, I understand that and would be willing with the understanding that you are indeed going to do the landscaping.
Right.
To let that go, but it can't, it, that this other stuff is too critical.
So Ty, what if I email you the as-built that shows? Everything to date. We just did that. And that has.
I mean, I have, I have the as-belts on record showing everything to date. I mean, a lot of the stuff on that as-built has never been approved, like the concrete, like we discussed, or the lack of the. The blacktop, um, the as-built, you know, doesn't show all the plantings. So I'm not sure if that's exactly what is being asked by this board, is to take the as-built and put it on record. And consider it approved, but if, I mean, I I don't think that's what you're asking as a board.
Well, you just, didn't he wanted to see what it looks like right now?
We don't, I meant, right, I think we don't quite understand what it actually looks like. And I, yeah, I mean, if you're talking, there's an existing concrete walkway. Around the front and back to the back of the property, that's not shown here. And that's obviously the fire department said it has to be there, so it has to be there.
So can we, should we put up the as-built or do you not want to do that?
I don't, I don't have it available, uh, and I have a hard copy in the office, so I don't have that available right now. Um, but I'm not sure where we're going with this conversation regardless.
So to be fair to.
Yeah, I I agree.
Um, it seems to me, if if you would, if you would permit me, um, it seems to me that, uh. Um, that the board is somewhat stuck on the completion of the parking. With some indication of what is there and what is to be done. Um, and maybe they are uncomfortable with providing the. Um, certificate of zoning compliance before that parking is done, but maybe the board would consider. Um, issuing that certificate of zoning compliance after that, that hardscape work was done. To their, to the satisfaction of the plan. Um, and then, you know, issuing that certificate before the planting goes in with the understanding that, that, that. With the hope that Billy would do what he's, what he says he's gonna do and 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 he's got a pretty good track record of, of doing what he's, what he generally, he thinks is right. Which is generally, you know, falls in line with what, what the, the, the board thinks is right, even though it might be. Several different iterations down the road. You know, we're, we're dealing with somebody who's not, who's not a builder and he's not a constructor, but he's an artist. So he's always looking at things from, from, from a different standpoint. So I think that, I think that to be fair to the applicant. You have to let Billy know exactly what this board would consider to be complete. And what they would consider to be incomplete and what they would be willing to waive. Um, so that he's got a good understanding of what he needs to do and sort of the timing for what he can do. What you just said.
Well, I mean, I I like, I I'm on, Billy, I'm on your side, uh, of the table a lot of times and. Um, and I understand the frustration when, um. You know, you you come back and you thought you had checked all the boxes and and it's a moving.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I mean, I think that, yeah, I I think that the, the, cause of, cause of where we are, you know, just in the year. The planting, um, you know, I I could get behind the idea of just, you know, moving forward in good faith. I think that the, in terms of the hardscape, it's a relatively light li- lift. I mean, it, um, just. And I think it would be good to just have that, you know, on the file, like existing. Um, a site plan that's documenting what, what the, what is there and what the ultimate intent is. And I'm just personally, like I. I'm thinking would be as simple as just demarcating when you transition from one material to the other, concrete to gravel, what you're edging it with, you know, steel.
Yeah.
Uh, and just kind of locating.
Yeah.
Lo- just locating, locating that. And and then it's, and then it's all understood. And I think everyone could.
Yes.
You know, feel good about having their, their, an understanding of of what the, what the final, you know, the built product's gonna be.
Yeah. In the discussion last time we met, the edging was extremely important. I don't think that it was a hundred percent defined as what it was going to be. And and so there's, since we worked in such a gray area anyway, and there's so many gray places in these plans. That it, you know, everybody, I think, what like Peter said, Billy, we're so supportive and wanting to get this going. And it's, um, it's such an important project and such an important place in the town now. And I think everybody just is like, oh, it's just gotta be right, you know, and we have to feel. That we've done our job in making sure things are right.
But I guess, so what Matt was saying about the driveways is. Or what Ty and Donna were saying, it was approved for asphalt. So do we tonight? Approve gravel and at least make that clear that we're approving the gravel? Um, and not requiring asphalt?
That. I'd be approving the gravel just for that little, the. Uh, just that certain area because the rest of it was already approved for gravel.
Right, yeah, I guess I, yeah. I I'm just, I'm just curious whether we have to do that tonight or is that?
I think that's part of the plan that he's gonna bring to us, showing us what's been done, what's gravel, what's gonna stay gravel. And what's gonna stay concrete that's already been executed. Just so we have a a real doc, a document that's actual on hand, so we can say, yep, that's it, we understand, we approve this. We understand the conditions of the climate, you're not gonna be planning at this time of year, so approved.
Okay, so you want me to get a, get the as-built plan or just the plan that shows what's been done so far? Get it to the board? With the driveway and the new, and the walkway, cause there is a plan with that. I don't know where it is, but there, there is a plan that has the. Walkway going around, cause we're looking at a really old plan.
All right, we're looking at what was approved. So we do have an as-built on file in the office. It, I mean, I I feel like all of you have seen the site and know what's there and what's not there. If you're satisfied with what's there, that I've gone around and inspected and, and I know that the as-built is accurate. To what is actually there. If, if you're good with approving what's actually on the site right now. That's, that's what the as-built looks like.
Right.
But I think it's important to let Billy know what other work, maybe because the as-built is gonna show what's there. And then there's, there's other components of the plan which show what still it needs to be done with regard to the parking. And, um, it's important to let Billy know what of that plan that still needs to be done, what, what components of the plan that still needs to be done. He should do, he needs to do before you issue the certificate of zoning compliance. You know, cause right now, Bill is asking you to issue the certificate of zoning compliance with the site as it's. Um, so it sounds like, like, you know, like I said before, you just have to, you have to tell him what you want. And tell him what you would be satisfied with in order to issue that certificate. And then take him at his word that he's gonna finish the balance of what's shown on the plan.
That's exactly right. And that would include the, the gravel and the plantings. That's, that's really all it is right now, is adding the gravel, leveling it, doing the, the edging to keep the gravel in. With, with what we're gonna do, make it look really beautiful and the, and some plantings. And that's, that's.
And your edging, your edging and gravel, you are anticipating to be done before May. Because your opening is in May, you wouldn't open without it being done.
No, I would have that, I would want it all to be perfect for when our, the first opening is, ab- absolutely. I think the only reason we didn't do it in the fall was because Tim said. It, if you put all the gravel down now without putting any edging, it's just gonna get plowed away. So why bother? Let's do it in the spring, thinking, yeah, that's perfect. It's like, let's do that.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I I think we need to see what that edging is. And what the finished parking lot and driveway area will look like. And the, we've discussed, the landscaping we understand is not gonna be done, so we can't approve that now. So we would have to give you the, the approval without the landscaping on it. But it has to have, from my perspective, the driveway has to be clear. Where the, what, what the, what the. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the the geometry of it is locked in, right? That's set.
Yeah. The driveway. What you're looking at, the edging of the whole driveway. Would be, would have an edging and it would be gray gravel over what's already there. After they, you know, grade it out and get rid of any bumps and all that. So, and what that would look like is, it's, I mean, I get a picture, I mean, you can just look on, you know, a picture of kind of. What that metal kind of Corten steel looks like, that comes out about three inches and it goes down into the ground. And then there's a stake and then you weld it. And it's just, it's just a clean line, like you see. Uh, you know, in a really nice parking lot.
I I understand, but we need to see, we need to see it with, we need to see, um, a, a, you know, a tear sheet. With an indication of where it's going. We just need to see what you're planning. I get it.
Okay, so why don't I outline the, the new plan? And. Get a couple pictures of what the edging's gonna look like and email it to you guys, let you check it out. And then if you have any questions about it, you can let me know. But that's.
Yeah, and to, and to, just cause, you know, to be, I think that. You know, I I think. Think we're pretty close, but I imagine what we're looking for would be. I think we're pretty close, but I imagine what we're looking for would be, you know, gravel color.
Yep.
Edging, material, you know, color materials, black and steel, Corten, whatever. And, and then um, you could probably work by hand, you know, on top of your existing as-built and just locate the extent of the concrete, the extent of the gravel and the extent of the edging.
Okay, the one, the one thing, Billy, that you have to understand is you can't just arbitrarily email all that information to the commission. It's something that needs to be presented to the commission in a regular, in a, in a meeting.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
My, my recommendation is this, you take the as-built that Gary worked on, come into the office, we'll sit down. We'll show you what you need to do as far as drying, you know, drawing in this, the uh, the pathway at indicating where the concrete is, what's gonna be gravel. Um, and then you get the cut sheets on the steel edging that's gonna be done, that can all get put into a packet. Uh, and then we can either do this at the next meeting or Ty can do this at the next meeting, which is actually next week. Um, that's the next regular meeting, uh, and then they can make the decision there. That's my recommendation. Of course, Ty, you know, and, and Matt would have to, but just, that's what I would suggest.
So just that, so you understand though, when you do all that, you'll be held to that. So I know we've had some discussions about the steel edging and to me, when you talk about it, it seems like you wanna do that down the road. If you're gonna put that on a plan and you're gonna present it to the ARB and the ARB is gonna approve it. And that's gonna be required before you get your certificate of zoning compliance. So I just wanna.
Ty, that's gotta get done before I get, okay, so that.
Exactly. So we don't wanna end back up in this circle again.
Well, that was, that's good that you say that because if I put the edging in that I wanna do this spring and you guys approve it, I have to do it before I get my CO.
That's correct, exactly. So anything that they approve as a final plan for you needs to be done before you can get your zoning compliance. And then later down the road, if you have other things that you wanna change or whatever, you can do that under the normal course of business, but these guys all have to agree on what they wanna see and what they wanna hold you to.
I'm glad you just said that because I thought you were just saying, you guys just wanna see a picture so I can show you what it's gonna look like. So you have it in your head, but if you're saying, if I put it in this plan, I have to do it before I get my CO, what, then that's that's the same thing as having the trees there. I have to do that before I get my CO.
Right, right.
So I'm just kinda shooting myself in the foot if I do that. The, how does that help me? That doesn't help me.
No.
Unless of course, the, the dark, unless of course, the board tells you tonight what they want you to complete before you, before they issue a certificate of zoning compliance. I mean, what is it that the board, and maybe the board needs to deliberate this a little bit, but what is it that the board needs to see? In terms of the parking, do they need the edging? Do they need the gravel? Does it all need to be graded and the transitions completed? I mean, I understand, I understand the plan is really important and we, most of us live and die by the plan. And because the, the, the plan is what we can see, we can visualize what's, what's gonna be, it's easier for us who do it every day to visualize it, but that's, we, we approve a plan that's, that, that we all have evaluated. But now it's the point that you're gonna be putting the stuff, you're gonna be putting it in place. And, and then the, and, and then the board is gonna say, okay, that's, that's, we, we, you have gone as far as we need you to go. And we can issue the certificate of zoning compliance. So does the board wanna see the edging? Does the board wanna see the grading done? Does they want, do they wanna see the gravel done? Do they wanna see where the, the topsoil, and I think the edging is gonna be that, where the topsoil is gonna come in to to meet the gravel, which is one of the reasons that you've got the edging, not only to keep the gravel out, but to keep the topsoil, you know.
Right.
Those are separated. So I think the board needs to figure out what they want to see. If they're willing to entertain it all, um, issuing a certificate of zoning compliance before the project is complete, what do they need to see? Sorry, I'll, I'll shut up now.
So if you, if I, if you just see what I have in mind, what I wanna do to the driveway compared to putting it in a plan, there's, this is two separate things, right? Do you wanna just see to say, okay, that's cool, we're gonna take Billy's word that that's gonna happen in the spring? Or do you want it in the plan to say, that's gotta get done before you get your CO? Which, which one?
There's actually a choice in the middle, which is that you put it, make the decision about what you're gonna use and not change your mind.
Right.
Which, you know, I mean, that's been part of the problem is that, you know, we, you know, you've gotten past halfway through a lot of the project and be like, oh, this isn't gonna work after all. And I think that's why we can keep coming back into a difficult area with it. Because the original plan has, you know, has gone off on, on different sides here and there. But if you say like you're a hundred percent going to use Corten, Corten for your edging, then I think the board says, okay, we know a hundred percent it's going to be, this is what the project is gonna be completed. Rather than, you know, if we say, okay, and then, you know, three weeks down the line, you say, you know what, I decided I'm not gonna use Corten. Then that, that's where I think the board is uncomfortable because we, we're permitting all these changes to be made after something's already been decided. And, and we have that responsibility too, you know, and that's, it, we have responsibility to you, but also to the to the town and to the, the planning to, to really make sure that, you know, things are done the right way.
Right.
And I trust you, Billy. I mean, I believe that you want this to be as beautiful as everybody else does.
Absolutely. You saw what I was doing.
But if Corten, like you were to say to me, I'm a hundred percent confident that the Corten will be in by May first. I, it, it feels, it feels more faithful to me than you saying, yeah, we'll use Corten and then in halfway through April, say, I'm not gonna do it after all, I'm gonna put this on the clock.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's what I wanna use, so I think I would, I think that's what we're gonna do, you know? I don't see anything, uh, unless the Corten, I can't get it or something, then I'd have to just use something else, but that's another story. You know, when I go to order all the steel, I haven't ordered it yet, so.
So before we can commit to that plan and before you can commit to the plan, maybe you have, we have to make sure that, that Corten is indeed available. Because then we're still, then we're in a sticky slope again, you know, where we've approved something and then you know, you come back or someone comes back and say, you know what, I can't do it after all.
So right now, there's the court rate, I guess I'm just a little confused that if I say, like you just said, like a hundred percent, I'm gonna use Corten. And if it's not Corten, it's black and steel, it's the same thing. I mean, it's, it's gonna rust and look like orange color. It's, you know, it's really nice. So either one of those two is fine. But that's not even in the plan. I just brought that up before the last meeting. That's not even in the plan, so. If I put that in the plan, you're saying I have to do that, even if I say, I promise I'll do that by May first or May fifteenth, or even just before I open. Then can it get approved and get my CO after you see the, see that? Or do I have to do that first? So I'm a little confused. Like you're saying, if I promise that, then I do it, is it gonna be Corten or black and steel? Or do I have to do it first? I'll have to do it.
You'll have to do it. I, I, I would wait on that and, and just do the things that we talked about tonight, which is the, is the driveway. Put on the as-built, the, um, the sidewalks, what's there now. And at least get that done. And then, then you can come back again and talk about the, the Corten, because maybe you can't get the Corten, maybe you gotta get Core nine. I don't know what I'm talking about, but you know what I mean? So, so because the more, you have to understand that the more specific that you are, the more.
Right.
The, the more you are stuck.
Right, right, right.
Billy, I would, I would, Billy, I would take, take um the offer from Donna and Ty to come into the office and let, let them help guide your, how this needs to be documented.
Let's do that. If you guys would help me do that, that would be great. And we can talk about it then and then present it to y'all and get a, see where we are. I just don't wanna put anything on the plan that then has to get done, because that just holds, that just holds off everything that I'm trying to accomplish with this special meeting. And that's it. Right.
And getting back to then Joanne's point from earlier, Billy, then, you know, that's, the, 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 the change from, from that hard surface to the gravel in the front part of the parking lot would have indicated you probably would have needed some edging anyway. So just keep that in mind when you're speaking with Donna and, and uh.
Okay.
That there has to be that, you know, it, because you're asking this board to, to, to approve now some changes to the plan. Um, some of which were required by the building and, and, and fire marshal, other, others which just seem to have been, been made organically. Those organic changes, you'll have to convince this board that, that the change is, is somewhat beneficial. And you might have to give them some edging, you know, whatever it is.
Gotcha. Okay, that makes sense. That makes sense. And um I'll do that. I'll let, I'll, I'll email you Ty and Donna and I'll come in and see you and then we can do the next meeting and take it from there.
Okay, all right. Just check, check tomorrow, because I don't know if we're gonna be open because of the snow. Uh, I don't think that a decision has been made yet, but call first.
Okay. All right.
And our, and our next meeting, Billy, is the seventh of March, so it's in place. It's a week tomorrow, from tomorrow. Yeah, we come, yeah, we come tomorrow. So it's next Tuesday.
Okay, that's great.
I don't think there's any reason to have a special meeting.
Nope. There's no rush for that. And I appreciate, I appreciate you guys taking the time for this special meeting. Thanks. I appreciate it. Welcome. Okay. All right, everybody. Thanks.
All right. All good?
Yep.
Okay.